Welcome to the July 8th meeting of the Martinville County Council. We begin a separate call to the court. Please call the call. John Magic, present. Susie Lewis.
Present.
Ben Main, present. Anne Miller.
Present.
Phil David Senior.
Present.
Phil David Second.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call. This evening, I would like to invite Pastor Mason from the Port of Maine Sandy Park.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sean Mason. I came this past year to the main church in Martinville. And I come to refresh and off of trying to keep up with first through sixth graders in our kids' day. I just wanted to tell you on behalf of our lead pastor Danny Anderson, my family, what a privilege and honor it is to be here in this community, serving what God has given us and always blessed us with. So let's go ahead and pray real quick. God in heaven, I just thank you so much for your goodness to us. I thank you for your mercies that they do every morning. I thank you for the freedom that you've blessed us with in our country, in our community, and just the time that we get to celebrate that on this past weekend. I thank you for the leadership that's in this room. I just ask right now, God, that you would just give wisdom to each and every person in this room, from council, the mayor, everybody in leadership. Lord, I just ask that you would give them wisdom. Leadership is a weighty thing, and we don't take it lightly. And so, God, we just ask that you would move, empower in our community, bless our community, bless our county. God, we just love you so much. I speak life and blessing in favor over this town, over this community. Lord, we love you and ask it in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any copies of the minutes from Monday, June 24th, Council meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to your minutes?
Thank the motion approved. Minutes as stated.
Second.
The motion may be seconded to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close vote, motion carries. Before we go too far into tonight's agenda, I think there was some misinformation that might have been out on social media today saying we were going to be discussing ordinance for dogs this evening for the council. We are not. That is not only intended this evening. We have had conversation with the county and city and talked about animal ordinance. We have looked into contracting, I believe, the contracting rate through the county with the same company that sells our park ordinance and our signings. We've given them different samples of surrounding communities, what their animal ordinances are, and we're trying to draft something that we can all take part in. There should be an ordinance around the entire county, and we need somebody from some of the other municipalities here under the county to help support the Humane Society. You, council, passed the budget to support one area for the Humane Society. And we're going to look for some of the other municipalities to do also in the county. So just wanted to kind of say you're more than welcome to stay for our meeting tonight. You're more than welcome to raise your comment at the end. I'll mention it after we're through with our meeting. So you're more than welcome to stay, and you want to say at least this next part's dead. So moving on to the agenda, Chief Line.
Good evening, council. This is one of the fun parts we want to show up. Sometimes there are few and far between, but I take great pleasure in doing things like this. As I've gotten older in animal, faith has become more important to me. It's funny how that happens, you know, but in one of my favorite scriptures, and I'll probably butcher it, but it's Matthew 22:36-40. And in that scripture, there's one Jesus who was asking, "What is the commandment?" And his answer was to love your Lord with all your heart, with all your soul. And the second commandment, to love your neighbor as thyself. And on these two commandments, all the laws of the prophets rest. So if we could just do those two things, I could retire. You know, it would be no need for me. Two things, which is very difficult to do, obviously. So we as police officers, we're not often noted for things of compassion, things that we do on a regular basis. And this was brought to me kind of by accident, and I thought of that as really nice. And then I said, "Right back to more." Not to diminish anything that all of our officers do on a daily basis, you just don't care. So I decided to highlight a particular act of one of our officers, Officer Gerkins. He had no idea, so his family didn't. Mr. Gerkins. Date, June 25th, 2020, from Rick Lane Teague to Joshua Gerkins, Patrol Officer. Subject of commendation. Patrolman Gerkins, I, as chief, want to take the opportunity to commend you for your actions that occurred on or about June 20th, 2024. While routine patrol, you responded to a residence in the city involving an issue with a juvenile. Residence is known to patrol as they have responded to the same address for various reasons in the past. During your investigation, you learned that the juvenile was being raised by his grandmother, who was also at the residence. At the point of issue at hand to a peaceful resolution, you noticed that there was a condition that was operating inside the residence. On this day, the temperature exceeded ninety degrees, and the air quality was very poor. The next day, which was your day off, you took it upon yourself to deliver a windwear condition that belonged to you to the same residence that you were at the previous evening, and are allowing them to use it as long as it is needed. This selfless act, in my opinion, goes above what is expected of an MPD patrol officer during the execution of his or her duties while routine patrol. Your compassion on that day was certainly in concert with what is written in Matthew 22:36-40. Therefore, it is my own honor to award you the chief meritorious service for your actions surrounding the June 20th, 2024. Congratulations, and a job like that. That's where your class at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We need to conduct a training this evening, so objection, we will be in recess for the purpose of conducting the public hearing. So at this time, we call the public hearing to order in regard to ordinance 2024-1888, modifying material cost of water utility.
Yeah, before denied because the ordinance 2024-1888, this ordinance has a modified material cost of city market water utility. This was made before the Board of Works at a previous meeting. And the Board of Works realized that the city really had not updated its material labor costs since 2012. So material has run out, cost of labor is also run out. And so, the Board of Works took a look at it and exhibited a patch to the ordinance that the Board of Works in conjunction with the city superintendent of the Gathers has resolved and looking increase in material labor should be in their agreement. So the Board of Works passed a resolution, following council recommendation to modify our ordinance and change the annual material cost that the utility passes on to the consumer, and that's what the fact conceded.
Any questions for Mr. Coffee?
Can we have a list of the previous ones?
I do have with me, I can sort of do, as to the current ordinances, so you can take what the
I'm sorry, was that, were you asking for the previous costs?
The current, the current cost. And Mr. Coffee said he does have that, he will email each one of you. Any other questions from the council? If not, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment in regards to this matter this evening? If not, then we will close the public hearing on ordinance 2024-1888. And without objection, the common council meeting is back in session. First item on the agenda tonight is the first reading of the ordinance. This being the first ordinance or the first reading of the ordinance, we don't have to take any action until that, so it's likely for the next meeting, parents, you're right. Mr. Line, Chief Line?
Yes.
The pre-aversion, pre-trad is going to be on that?
Excuse me, I need.
Okay.
Yeah, that can cheap comes.
Good evening. It was brought to Chief Line, I was attention that the court wanted to give the police department some funds. After some consideration by Chief Line, Major Manley, I, we narrowed down the list to be within the phone alama front of court. But thank you to you guys, it's back to you, a pretty simple breakdown of what we're hoping to acquire. Is there any question on that?
This is the total, you want to spend a lot of your credit?
Eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-four hundred and ninety cents.
And quite a treasure, Merida, just confirming enough of the proper procedures of prosecuting.
Yes, yes, the police department is working, even in the prosecutor, just on again. So this, all parties of agreement with these items that runs available.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Out of the list that you guys have, there are actual quotes that we'd like to see.
They're attached to, they're attached there.
Okay, so there is there one, okay. As you seen in the books, body armor is the biggest portion of that. We're currently running a level two, level two A vest with no plates included. The plate is something that will give you protection to rifle round or higher round. The new vests are level three vests, three A, I believe, with a rifle weight for up to, I don't remember the caliber they were. Something that would be common around this area for hunters. It's going to offer has a lot more protection from injuries. And as we warmed up, we found three plus shootings within the last thirty hours and within the city. And additional staffing, so buying crimes on kind of an uptick here, trying to make our guys as safe as possible. With the rifles and handguns, we're currently operating with rifles that are about eight to ten years old with more than six patrol officers that do not have a patrol rifle in their vehicle. So again, something that's a priority. And something we're commonly asked for repeatedly, this feature, there are less damage in the tornado from 2023. So that's in place as well, so we can back out into the community. So if you're blessed, we would like to purchase the listed, what?
So if you're also asking to take up two, three, or five, six, seven, three, eight, have a scooter, what do you? And each, each, from how correct will be.
Each of us are correct. Okay, and moving forward, we're compliant with our library reporting, which will finish step for us because of being noncompliant limits us in our availability to apply for insurance. So once we get compliant, we're having, we can, in the replacement side of the vest, start a five year cycle and
So is the last, is it three year or five year?
Five year, okay. So we're, we're current right now, trying to get the action.
Right here. Motion approved.
Second.
Been motion made, seconded to approve the pretrial aversion fund purchases. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close vote, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Prior to tonight's meeting, you were sent copies of claims. Are there any comments?
I have one question. Looks like on the twenty eighth of June, Sonic Mountain, for like Adrian for three thousand dollars. Wouldn't that be something that would be paid for by the car claim?
The car claims, I haven't looked that, that one may have been the venue line, which we're talking about.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm going to have to look at the specific one, be able to tell you if you have that anywhere.
Think that came out in Canada?
It did.
That's why. Which is what was raised on one hundred and twenty-three and one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-four.
And is your microphone on?
My microphone.
Yes, remove it, sir.
Did that mean?
It's a.
Yeah.
But yeah, that, that one paid through edit as it was last year. No, that's, that's rated on your docket, not on the parks docket.
I'm sorry, second.
That was paid through edit as it was last year, and that's why it's on your docket, not on the parks docket.
Okay, okay.
So it's a piece of, congratulations, that one should be.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's what she was, yeah.
Any other comments or questions regarding the claims?
Thank the motion for the claims, does.
Second.
The motion may be seconded for the claims as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any comments from the counties?
Yes, I was approached by a constituent last night about the homeless problem as a result of patients that did not come to the program. They, with the hospital for rehabilitation, hospital, of course, whatever. They, if they don't apply to everything they're supposed to do, they're pretty much just showing up. And, you know, there's no transportation for them to get back to wherever they came from. And so this is increase the homeless population in the city and this constituent. It's pretty unhappy, you know, that we've got these people from out of go to clinical and, you know, they, they, you know, couldn't complete. So they're just put out the door and they just are wandering around the city and, you know, I don't know if something could be done about it. But this, you know, I just wanted to bring that up because it's a real concern.
Any suggestions?
From them?
From, from anyone?
From anyone? Oh, well, you got a suggestion, I don't think, but, you know. You know, so I don't know, I would assume, you know, think that they, if you could have completed the program, that they would have some kind of transportation to send you back to where you, from where you came from. But I guess that's not the case right now.
Let's say it's a private enterprise. My understanding, the folks that participate in the program are required to provide their own transportation both to and from their treatment. And since it's a private business, there's not really much that you can do with it.
And, you know, the executives or, you know, the management kind of will be, you know, told about this problem and
We have had some, so, those are the meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mary, the, of the evening, I'm sorry, is that, that's all, just said.
That's it, that's it.
Sorry. Just before darkness, those are tower, the entrance to the city.
Gary, I'm wrong, but I think when it's a certain time, there's a photo sensor in there, it's not getting all the way off.
Okay.
Now, I noticed the one on the south, when I came into town last week, it was dark and it was all So we might want to check if the state
Just as I was going around the curfew the whole time, the past
And strobe, and
Yes.
And the state's not trying to zoom into the town?
Yeah, we had normal with Northmont, it's a big difference. Sensing of the, of the, of the cell itself is quite different. We often cross the bridge down there, and lights be on one side of the bridge and not the other. A few minutes difference in the timing, so I saw this, I was picking up the signal.
Thank you. The signal is, is there any way or can we put, I know I noticed water building. I know some workers have sanitation, they're finding a lot of residents are using the trash can, just putting loose trash in there, stuff, with bags and all those. Here, probably, we can remind you, please, bag the trash in the streets. Our workers are doing a great job, trying to scoop everything up. It's kind of like the Fourth of July, so there's a lot of debris up our streets, and that's a shame.
Yeah, we should be able to put some, some work in there.
Thank you. That's all I have.
At the corner of Paris and the Mary, there are three retract that they'll cover used to be. I would assume it'd be the city workers that cleaned up that, where that block wall was at, where the old cover used to be, the guy that sent us residents there and was leaving everything there. I assume they appreciate you guys, so thank you, that looks a lot better.
Thank you, Brian. Any else from the council? From the public, you have comments?
I'll say to you, the other part of the job, we're really on the Fourth of July.
Yes, yes. I had comments from the follower and from, I came in for five words and from, we're in town, they really
Could state your name, address, and to the representative?
It's Cardinal Pershore, ninety-three South Grant Street, three one seven four three one one four four. But this is an extremely touchy subject, and you spoke earlier in tonight's meeting that there'll be more discussion the next meeting, and I hope to be here. I was a part of the social media today and have last week and last year. Last night, there was a dog killed on Maryland and South Street. I was given, that information was given to me, and it was two loose dogs. I was chased last week by a Russian shepherd. It left its charge and came three yards over. If they had, for retired firemen, I probably would have been attacked. My aunt was attacked last year and has received physical damage, permanent physical damage. Connie, let me write her last name. Connie Davis, she was attacked here, and she has to have, she's got shoulder injury and has to have major surgery. She is afraid to walk the streets. This is continuing. Our ordinances aren't strong enough, but please show up and nothing is I, my situation, the police showed up, didn't go walk up to the house where the dog belonged. And there have been several complaints about that dog. Other situations, the dog being killed, the police showed up, I'm not sure the, what they did or didn't do because I only got part of the information. But again, I've been chased twice, once this year, once last year, and I don't want to give my And I don't want to give a, my wish to walk in my city because there aren't any ordinances or guns ready for these dogs and these owners, aren't taking responsibility for their animals. I hope that we consider the state's ordinances. That it might be something that you follow and that you look at when you talk to the people. And that we can get a bigger facility. A lot of things come in this, it's like the main one. It's our main one. What if this had been a child that was attacked yesterday? This was found by your home, Bill Decker. What if it had been a child? The child might not have survived. This is... This isn't just trash in the street, this isn't water building raised, this, you know, this is safety of our community members. And they're paying attention now. They may not have been before, but they are now. And I'm going to stay on that. Each and one of you are going to become my best friend. I'm not threatening, I just want, I want results. I want, huh, these owners to be accountable. My dog is dangerous. Why should this, why should your dog go on free when mine doesn't? That's all I ask, is that you look deep in your heart, head, and consider what your community's being exposed to. Daily, not just every now and then, but daily. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Carla, and, and we are working, there is nothing set for date to come back from the council.
Well, I don't contact them. Or do I just have to show up every...
It'll be on our head. I think that's what's on the red page.
You can, you can check that, so I can't tell you whether it's coming in August, September. We're waiting for the county, and we'll get back together and we'll see where we can go from there. The council will... Until we get the draft, uh, put together.
There are days someone's... And it leads to no possibility of injury. Thank you.
Anyone else want to comment?
My name is, you know, I decided for seven weeks to you. The social media statement that we was asking when we could start discussing the ordinances tonight. Not that we were going to discuss it. I'm going to ask that the ordinances that are in the works, we make, that, the, I would, once it's, be a... That they be considered to be added to the animal control ordinances. That, that apartments that are in this town in Morgan County. That they enter, that animals and animal owners be under the same guidelines, that they're not set, that they can't make their own rules and allow two or three big giant busy dogs in the same apartment. This leads to hostile animals. And we've had so many dog sightings in the apartments. If they make their own rules, it doesn't seem to be fair for everybody. You know, the apartment, or our residents have apartments though, and they're coming in Morgan. There's a lot of fearful people that don't even want to come out of their apartment, that I personally... I get knocks on my door all the time because they know that I will address these things with the manager. They're just, or they call me and they say, I can't come down, I'm afraid. Because there are some hostile people, people that, when you have, well, anywhere, that they've had people doing that, and they, they purposely have their dogs attacked. They will open the door and let their dog run out if they know another person is coming out that threatens their, want to do drugs. And I'm asking that, if animal control is called, that they come out. Because I've called them. My dog has been bit seven times in the last four years. She's not invited, she doesn't like that. These dogs come out of nowhere and attack them. I've got vet bills that I just paid because animal control did not knock on my door. I called the police, the police had called animal control, and it's out of their hands. And animal control said, did you call the police? All right. It was on birthdays. Something wrong needs to be done. Five women over sixty-five years old that have gotten bit severely with their hands because it was trying to save their whole dog. In the last three years.
Name what departments you're talking about? Departments who you're talking about?
This is coming from many apartments, the four seventy, four ninety, Morgan Street. This is coming from many other apartments. It's, I've been walking around, and it's not just isolated Morgan House, it's not isolated to another apartment, it's not isolated to Martinsville, it, Mooresville people are complaining also. It's Morgan County, it's a Morgan County issue.
And that's one of the reasons we started with the county first.
Uh, maybe, yes. I know these ordinances, I've seen them. You haven't seen them, I think they should see them. They can protect people from vicious dogs. They do not protect animals from vicious dogs. There's no accounting though, just like there is now. I think the people think that it should be heard and played in as part of these ordinances. We need to see them, this is public information. We need to be able to go to the board meetings, other meetings that the Humane Society sit in on there. We need to know where they are and when they are. So we need to talk to them.
You're kind of losing our focus of what we, our jurisdiction, we don't have any control over the Humane Society, and their own governing board. As the ordinances, when the draft is presented and it goes out with the council, it will be on our agenda and on our website where people can see it. Once they are adopted, then it'll also be on our website.
You know, Mayor, if I could object here, I, I know we do have leash laws and these organizations, we've gone through this before, but Chief Lammer, W G Combs, you'd like to address them. They are issuing, they do follow state guidelines, there's state laws on vicious animals. They do have authority, and they do respond. I, I know there was a call, the problem is you kind of look at everything. I know on Admiral Street they had an animal that was, uh, by a vicious dog. But the dog that was attacked was also a going free as well. You can't side one and not the other, but... Appreciate if you would respond to what you do, you know, because if someone is attacked, there is a broken law, state law, you do, you can issue a citation of all charges of animal. But if you don't mind, study how state law, I've got to have a sense that they feel like the department is not responding or not doing anything about these situations when if you call, you will respond. But, you know, if it is a case where this is just a roaming dog and you not know what belongs, that's a little different situation, but if you have that address and location, which that, they're going to make... And that's just protocol, but, General?
Yeah, it's, it's, we're going to do what the IC codes allow us to do. I can't adequately respond to what you're talking about right now, you know, I'm not handling what you're saying at all. But, but I, I don't know the specific cases, things like that, I'd have to research that. But we can, we can research how many, how many, uh, dog bites we've had in the last calendar year to give us an idea of, of, of what is happening. We know it's happening on the street, we've talked, we've talked to people that's come in here and filed complaints, but, excuse me. And if you don't get it, you're getting adequate service from our department. You can always call the department here, I'm here almost every day.
So what is your name?
Rick Lang, I'm the chief here, and this is definitely Chief Combs. So, uh...
The problem is that, I appreciate that if you will do that, that would be very helpful. The number of dog fights that have happened, that when they call and nobody comes out. I was told that, that animal control officer, this woman, needs to file a report, and he doesn't come out to the court.
So it's kind of default for us that if somebody calls with an animal complaint, that it gets directed to animal control first? Sometimes we're not...
That's what I was told.
Right, sometimes we're not even getting those calls to be able to respond.
Yes, that I was told it wasn't your responsibility to file a report, it was animal control, that the police officers had come out and they said we would tell animal control, and they will be giving a order.
They're also doing that authority, they can issue citations, they can speak with whoever, put them in a court, but they also have discretion, so, which doesn't, then allows them to not write a citation and actually do so.
Yes.
Based off the, the how they have the services, so...
Man, the other problem we have right now, the way it's operated, um, our animal control officers have no police powers, so they don't have the authority to take a dog unless there's permission to do it. So that's another problem that we have, is, again, I agree with you, it's countywide. It's a situation where a lot of people need to put their heads together and come up with the ordinances that makes sense, but also that works. Other, other counties around us do have ordinances, I think some of them are better than others, and some of them are pretty good the way they do it.
Yes.
But it was, it's going to take concerted effort, and in my opinion, uh, to get a handle on some of these issues, we're going to have to, with animal control, with police powers. And that may take a totally different department to be formed, but animal control, countywide, with all these powers participating, which you're talking about a very significant amount of money. You're talking facility, talking about various animal control officers, the money's going to pay various staff. But there are counties around us that do, and it seems to work pretty well. And then you would have a separate Humane Society that is focused on what they're supposed to be focusing on. So again, this is a, this is a, a issue that's not going to be solved in one meeting or two meetings, but, but it is a concerted effort. I know that the mayor's been working on it a lot of several weeks. We have deferred to the county because I think they are the ones that should spearhead this, but we're going to be helping that best we can. Uh, and then obviously the council's going to be very active because, uh, they're going to have to be the one that officially has the...
Which council?
Martin's.
Which council?
It's, yeah. At least for the, at least for what's going to be governed through the city laws of Martin.
And our hope is once the county and the city come together on the ordinance, the county will adopt it, we will adopt it, and then the other municipalities, Mooresville, Brooklyn, or, or, I mean, that will enable us to have an animal control department to, that we will help support. Wouldn't necessarily be an officer of the powers, it's animal control, it'd be completely separate. You can, department.
In each, in each district, for each...
No, I wonder if one department for the, some of the sheriff's department.
I know it's a big undertaking, or, person, I guess, among one, and I keep all the calls. I'm glad that something is, any works. And I have seen these ordinances, I don't think they're very good, I haven't seen them before. I would have a max to hear, but... I do something, it's, um, is there a timeline, does anybody have a timeline?
Yeah.
And, but be forewarned, you know, that, that, like that the Chief Combs said, is we have discretion, uh, because we know what it is to get to court, we have to prove it, you know, and things like that. So sometimes there's an unhappy camper over here because we're trying to tell him we can't prove this. You know, but just be, be aware of that, you know, but if, if there's, if there's an IC code out there that, that we can enforce for a good, you know, so, uh, so in the meantime, like I say, if animal control was called and they don't show up, you probably got our number, go ahead and call us. And, uh, we'll see if we can't prioritize that.
And, and just be mindful, right now, there's one officer.
Yes.
Three?
We have three officers.
I haven't got my glasses on, I can't see that far.
We have three officers, one works days, one works nights, one works weekends, and we have all of Morgan County. So if we have a call that's a dog bite versus a stray dog, we have to prioritize what type of, what type of call we have. So if, if we have a dog bite versus a stray dog, we're going to go with the dog bite first. We also follow what's the emergency, if it's a nice stray dog, we can, we're not going to take it. The reason being is because we had to follow our contract orders as well. To say place is open for injured dogs, aggressive dog, or, or something like that, to be able to fill the spots inside of the cameras. A lot of times, we get my artist, last night, I started at nine o'clock this morning, got it at three thirty this morning. I had been nonstop all day. And so trying to prioritize where our calls are at, they get it from our city police department and the sheriff's department. When I call Martinsville, it's a blessing because there are not so multiple people. And so we're going to work together, we're going to put our heads together, figure out how we want to fix this situation. We had a situation last night where a little dog got killed, I was on the call. Um, we were able to talk to both people, it was a pure accident, um, it was not, that was intentional. It's that thing that happened, but we try to do everything that we possibly can to make sure that we're able to look down in the ways that we can, but there's only one person on ship for the entire world camera.
I understand, can people bring me their animals because they're hard to, what, see what I can do, can I save them? Yeah, I, I feel your pain.
So a lot of...
You know it firsthand, and I don't, you know, I don't, I don't want those dogs to continue to suffer.
A lot of, a lot of things, like with the apartments, and things like that, a lot of that we have to follow on the property, contracts, and if it's on a private property, I can't overstep that. Therefore I call the police department or the sheriff's department, they come out, because I can't... So I rely on their help, and they have been very helpful with it.
It might change because they come knock on my door, I have managers. Why can't I have, they have, they have no support. And I, I won't say this new manager because I don't know how she's going to do this.
Your comments seem to be attractive to, and you and us, we have, we have... So, there's somebody else that'd like to have a, a comment, so if you must step forward, name and address, go back, please.
Thank you.
Terry, my address thirteen twenty, Martin's one, yeah, six six five, three four six, four two six one. My question is to her, or as she said, other apartment complexes, my question is, do you go to your property managers?
Yes.
Because we've looked at, we've been getting all the, we've seen, we can see his property, all the contracts that we can see. Like where you live at. The dogs you're having recurring issues with are the dogs that are re, breed restrictions on those lease agreements.
I know.
So why is it the property managers?
Yeah.
That's, I mean, you can't, just what I'm saying, how can we enforce if they are not enforcing it on their property?
Right.
So how are we supposed to be able to enforce it? The same with.
I don't.
Trailer cars, things like that, if you're dealing with as well, it's the same exact thing. The property managers make them sign these leases to be tense, and you're going to obey these rules. They, you have twenty-five dog breed restrictions, and you have all these animals living in these places. That, again, how is that animal control? That is an issue which the property. And I mean.
It is the property manager and, um. I, I, I really, I think that she'll be able to be more good on this. The one before her, I wrote several letters to get her out of there because. I was chased, two other ladies was chased, and little bitty dogs, and two very big dogs was, would have ripped them apart if they could. Um, did attack my dog, and she, the manager before said to me, why didn't you run? Yeah, well.
Ma'am, we can't hear you.
I know, why didn't you run, and the manager said, why didn't you run?
What do you mean, why?
Or, you know, just.
Okay, I, I, I think we're losing.
It was the mani, manager before this one.
Okay, but again, that, that's not anything this council can address, because that's a private entity. So that's something residents will need to take after with.
Well, we got that manager out of there, I wrote letters to the apartment, and I put it on porch time and everywhere that dogs were being killed. At Morgan House. And Morgan House is failing to protect the residents and the dogs.
I just want residents to understand there's state law that if you're being attacked by a vicious animal, or your home is being attacked by a vicious animal, all I want on our police department will respond.
But this manager, I think, she's, yeah, a lot of incidents, she, she's real personable, and she'll, she'll be more willing to work. But we need to know how, how to, we need to know how they're given. The apartments are next, but as far as I'm concerned, they're not separate, no, I'm just going to check into how. We can't. Outside of she had properties. It's not fair. Thank you.
County crack, uh, two 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 five Florida Avenue, so, phone number, that's three four one, six zero eight zero. So it's hard for the city or the, uh, the county having, you know, these ordinances, if there are any, if we want to know information about this, there, you know, you can go to county meetings. Is there any of this with county that we can have?
I, county commissioners, the first and third Mondays, the first meeting of the month. Their second meeting, uh, is at six thirty. I have no idea where is that in their agenda, Josh Mesmer, who's the county executive, is one that's been working with us. Anyone? So council, you can tell by the comments tonight, it is something that's very important, I know with Josh, the council parent, and a couple of meetings. So as soon as we get something, and again, like Mr. Coffee said, we take these around the community, and we're trying to pick out what best works. Uh, for Morgan County, as soon as we got the copy, we will, we share those with. If there's nothing else, then we are adjourned.